My last full reading, full stop.
Oh dear. Okay. Have we got any members of the public wishing to speak tonight?
No, no members of the public present on this call.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we shall go on to item one, any apologies for absence?
No.
No. Okay, any item two, any declarations of interest? Nope. Nope. Okay. Item three, I bet it's not going to go this fast all the way through. Do you see the minutes and confirm the recommendations therein of the full council on the 11th of January, which was the precept, and Monday the 25th of January? Has anyone got any questions on those?
Well, the green.
Green, yeah. Good. Thank you. Okay, item four, to receive the minutes of the planning committee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As acting chairman for the Monday 1st February meeting, I present those to the council.
Thank you.
And for the 22nd of February, I present those minutes to members of the council.
Lovely. Thank you very much. And item five, the town centre and events committee to receive the minutes therein of those.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To present the minutes to, obviously, to note. But there is one item on the agenda which is to agree earmark reserve, which is to do with the Holocaust memorial. In the report, the town clerk has stated that there will be, a thousand pounds will be sufficient after investigating it. And that we have to agree earmark reserve at council. But what I would like to say is, can we give a thanks to our stunning events team and town centre manager, who have pulled out the stops with cooperation of the subcommittee? And they're going to be putting on lots of events through the fringe, which is a good sign. The council getting back to working how we want to do. Council Bloomfield, myself and councillor John Harvey have met. And we put skeleton together for them, for the fringe. And that event will be taking place, subject to the rules, which is a really positive thing. But going back to the recommendation for earmark reserves, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Is everybody happy with that? Everybody agree that?
Yeah.
Any disagree? No? Okay. Good. All agreed, Robin?
That's wonderful.
Item six, the environment committee to receive those minutes.
Paddy has a hand up.
Oh, sorry, councillor Collins, you're muted.
I just want to put an amendment to item six.
Well, point of order, Chairman, the minutes haven't been presented.
We haven't just heard.
I'll put my hand up, that's what I want to do.
Okay, let's have somebody present those minutes first.
Um, town clerk, I just noticed that when I added councillor onto my name, I've knocked off the R at the beginning.
Yeah.
For me. I don't know how to do it myself.
There you go.
Cut the R again. So the minutes of the environment committee will be agreed by the next environment meeting. And there are recommendations. The first will go under the confidential part of the meeting, which is 1087/20 to do with the new cemetery. The other one that the environment committee has asked for council, we're asking, we're recommending that full council agree, 1088/20, the Tindric Road, green spaces. I don't think you need me to read through it, do you? Because you've all got it in your interview.
Yeah.
And would you allow me to speak on that, Madam Mayor, as I propose both of them?
I think.
Well, I think it's appropriate that I speak first before amendment goes in.
Okay.
The first one, which is on the minutes to be agreed, which is the purchase of the cemetery. This is something which is in keeping with the Buckingham neighbourhood plan and in keeping with the ambitions of the council since 2015. You will all recall that we took five years to get the planning through. And with Covid and one thing and another, and we have the money in earmark reserves. And that's why that is being proposed. On the second, to the council, the, it is in the minutes of the environment committee draft minutes. The second item to take over the land along the Tindric Road. It was discussed in the nth degree at the environment committee. And members have been involved in this for a very, very long time. In sense, since we all were involved in the situation where we were unable historically to get involved into the Lacehill development, when we were unable to act as a council because we were not party to those decisions. The history of it is that we all discussed it endlessly through committees. And we are in a position now where there is a situation where we can move forward on this within this council to be in a position, as it says, if financially prudent, to move forward to that agreement. Not to do that would be would be difficult to understand as we've worked endlessly as a council through the environment committee, through the planning committee, through full council, to get to this position where we can do that. It still allows the town clerk to come back to us at a later stage. If, as the confidential minutes state, it isn't as we had agreed tonight. But it does mean that we got certainty on that. So that's why at the council meeting, I proposed it, and councillor John Harvey seconded it. And in the first one, it was seconded by the chairman of the environment committee, was for the taking over of the cemetery for me earmark reserves. Because not everyone was at environment. I think it's appropriate that we talk a little bit about the background to those things. I'm hoping tonight there won't be too much difficulty over them because they were both long-term ambitions to council. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I propose that we move to the vote on the both items.
Okay.
Got to let me speak first, Robin, come on.
The first item, the first item is in confidential, so we can't move to a vote on that yet. No. So councillor Collins?
Yeah, just a point of clarification. We talk about things to the south of Tindric Road, the north of Tindric Road, or both sides?
Both sides.
Both sides.
Does it include Foundry Drive? Play area.
It's the two new developments.
Okay, that's a relatively recent one, so you could describe that as new. My, if it doesn't include Foundry Drive, my amendment is to add that to the list. Foundry Drive play area.
Um, could I come back on that, Madam Mayor? I actually think what councillor Collins actually says is, makes sense. But it is not part of the negotiations that we're currently in, that's with a separate developer. If councillor Collins is proposing that we go into discussions with that developer, I'd be quite happy to do that. But it can't be done in this because it's a different developer.
Of course it could be done, Robin.
Well, we could, we could agree it.
You have two, two, two things going simultaneously. What is the problem?
I will ask the town clerk whether he believes we can do it. If he believes we can do it, I'm happy to accept that.
Okay, let's, let's.
Amendment.
Ask Paul about this.
Very good point. But I'd be guided by the town clerk because it's not in the paperwork that we've been given tonight.
Yeah, so I honestly don't know the details of Foundry Drive. This, I don't see why the committee can't agree in principle to take on Foundry Drive subject to discussions and further information coming forward, or words to that effect. Obviously, the environment committee, it's not something the environment committee have considered. So, but it's certainly in order for that to be included, subject to further information, I guess.
Yeah, I think I've had a couple of calls from people in Foundry Drive about the play area and the maintenance costs they're having to pay. And they were questioning why they're having to pay so much because the new development next to it is, is being included in being able to have the use of that. And she phoned me to say it was on our books floor, it described it as a public space. So that was why she, they were querying that because under their residence thing, they're having to pay maintenance and stuff for, for the and she said, why are we paying for it separately when the new development are also using it? And you've put it on books floor as the public space. So I think that's where that came from.
Yeah, if I can, it would involve a separate negotiation with a separate developer. And obviously, the intention is that we'd be given a capital sum to take on the Tindric Road. But certainly, members could agree in principle to consider it. And we'd bring back further detail report at some point.
Thank you. All right. Is everybody happy with that? Councillor Mahi?
Oh, councillor Smith is before me.
Sorry, councillor?
Smith.
Smith was before you, sorry. Councillor Smith.
Thank you. I'm quite happy with all this, but I would ask you to cast your minds back to when we've taken over play areas previously. And they've been made of substantial, rather insubstantial material and don't last too long. So I think it may be useful, if we could have an amendment to this, to say that, to ensure that the, any play equipment installed by the developer is to a suitable standard. And I believe our green spaces team does have a standard of approved manufacturers and all the rest of it.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Mahi?
Thank you. But before we move on this one, somebody has to second the amendment that councillor Collins has put forward. So I'm going to second that.
Thank you. And councillor Cole?
You're on mute.
You're on mute, Mark.
Thank you. Yeah, the recommendation is the full council should take the spaces on, provided that Barratt agrees a suitable initial payment. It doesn't say which way that payment should be going. We know that the public, or anyone reading these minutes, would. So could we insert that Barratt's agree to make a suitable initial payment?
I'm happy to second that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, agreed.
Okay, councillor Stott, speak.
Just for clarity, I think it's been a good discussion. I think councillor Collins is right to raise Foundry. But I think we have to, can we, can we, for clarity, because we've not actually got any financial agreement with that. Would it, councillor Collins, accept that we would agree to go into a negotiation with the developer?
Absolutely. I just want it on there.
Would you accept that, councillor Collins?
Yeah.
That, that we include the words that we go into the development on Foundry Drive with the developer? What you say makes absolute sense. But we were a bit focused on the one development because of the history of it, which you will accept. But I think we have to be a separate sort of agree this and then agree the amendment as a separate thing so that it's clarity for the minutes. Would that?
I'm sure the minute clerk can get clarity on this. It's not difficult.
No, it's just that the money's in the first one, councillor Collins, not in the second one. And that, and we've got the confidential minutes, which I know you would have read to the nth degree.
Okay.
I seek clarity from the town clerk, whether that would be appropriate that way around. Because it's important, because it could mean that if somebody could think we're taking something on, we hadn't got any financial agreement on. It's important that we have those words appropriate. I see guidance from the town clerk on that.
So already said that, oh, Paul.
Yeah, he did.
Yes, I assumed that for councillors, councillor Collins' amendment, it would be words to the effect of to take, to investigate taking on the land at Foundry as well. Subject to, subject to negotiation with the developer.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to hear. It's just so that it's in sync. Thank you very much.
Okay, is everybody in agreement with that amendment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Madam Mayor, there was also councillor Smith's thing about the play equipment being of suitable standard.
Yeah, we'll have to look at that.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay. Can I propose for you, if we've voted to agree that, that we do a press release on it at the end of the week, please?
And is everybody in agreement with the, with the first motion?
The motion as amended.
The motion as amended. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, everybody on that? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's a piece of history now, isn't it?
Yeah. Move on to item seven, the resources committee to receive the minutes of those.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I'll take them in the, in calendar order.
Yeah.
Firstly, to propose your acceptance of the Thursday of the 18th of February meeting. That was the preceding one. There's, there's just one addition that needs making to the website copy of the minutes. And that is the date of the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And if you're happy to receive those, also to present the, the draft minutes of the 1st of March resources meeting. No matters arising or anything, recommendations from either of them for tonight.
Lovely, thank you. Okay, so item eight, to receive the minutes of the economic development working group.
Similarly, to present you with the draft minutes of the 11th of February meeting of the economic development working group.
Thank you. Oh, councillor Stott, please, you've got your hand up.
And just to say, I would, I would, well, I thought councillor Smith's press release on it, I saw the other day about what we were doing with the app and the working group, which brought that forward was a good addition to the town. And those sort of cooperative working practices have produced something really wonderful. And I'm looking at the amount of hits we've had on the Tories app. It's been tremendous. And I think we should note our thanks to the working group, working with the council on that, and particularly councillor Smith.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
I can, I can take absolutely no credit for, for Bucks more at all. It was all done in. My involvement was just a nod and sign things.
I don't believe you, Mike. I really don't believe you. I'm sorry. I know you would have made sure it went through.
Thank you. Okay, item nine, to receive and question the reports from Buckinghamshire council councillors. Have we got anyone speaking on that tonight?
Well, I'm here.
He's here. Where is he?
I'm here. Just to be brief, obviously, you'll see the council agree the precept. My group didn't vote for the precept because there was forty-eight million pounds in reserves and many other things. It was on the webcast. We've also, I've attended a couple of planning meetings, one in regards to an application in Maysmore, which I proposed we, the committee voted against, and that was carried. And that was in Maysmore. And I've also, we'll be attending the cabinet meeting at the end of the month. I've also attended the fire authority meeting, at which case we, at the fire authority, discussed the budget and realised that we are going to be a million pounds short next year. And we spent the reserves this year to bring in the budget within the 2%. So next year, we've put earmark reserves of £600,000 to allow, to have a referendum on the rates for the fire authority. If the government doesn't come forward with allowing the fire fire to have the same assistance in setting its, its calculus of its rates as they do the police authority, which aren't uncapped. The fire authority has spent its reserves. And what will happen unfortunately, if the fire authority can't balance its budgets next year, and it will, it will result in closure of fire stations. And it will result in reductions of investment, which usually means service delivery. That's quite an important thing for the fire authority. I also will be attending the audit committee of the fire authority tomorrow. And I've attended the audit committee of the council and obviously the community board's meetings. And at the community board, we discussed the town councils wish to become some parity of recognition. Unfortunately, the, it wasn't an agenda item. It became an item from the chairman. And subsequently, nobody had the information before in any written form. It was just two verbal exchanges. And the community board, which was quite full of councillors on the evening, Buckinghamshire councillors, voted that they didn't believe that the town council and parish councillors' names should be recognised in parity to the Shire or Buckinghamshire councillors. But I'm happy to ask questions on that. But I, there were two other members present at that meeting. And they may have a view on that separate to my own. But I hope that helps. Two minutes, but particularly, I think we need to understand the fire authority financial situation. And it might be for a new council to get, to try and discuss that in some length with them. What would happen if there was a referendum? And I think that would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Councillor O'Donoghue, did you have your hand up there? No, you were just resting it. She's muted. Okay, thank you, councillor Mordu.
As far as the community board goes, there was a long discussion. And councillor Harvey put quite forcibly his point of view. And there were a number of councillors there, but there's also a number of people who weren't councillors. And it was voted on, and the motion was lost. But I think it will be under consideration again. Because again, we, we start a new community board, if you like, structure after the next elections.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've attended many meetings to do with the constitution, the financial aspects of the authority, the standards board. I'm not going to go into list naming. I think the most important meeting was to do with the health and wellbeing board. I asked about the future of the Lacehill Medical Centre project. And I've, I've got a reply now, but it's not a sufficient reply. Only to say that they're waiting for approval from NHS England, who have to sign off any process. Why this has to go on after they've already been given a tacit approval from the, what is it now? It's about three years ago, they were given approval to go ahead. But it still has to be signed off by NHS England, which still takes time. There will be a lot lost, I think, if the medical centre doesn't go ahead. And the planning permission does run out at the end of this year. Obviously, they can reapply. But it's something which I've been following since 2009. And I'm hoping that the medical centre will go ahead. And that doesn't mean to say that the hospital will close or anything like that. It just means that you will get extra benefits, including another emergency unit which can act, deal with minor injuries. And the other clinics, which it will attract to Buckingham. That's why I'm so keen in favour of it. I'll take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from anyone? Councillor Stott, speak.
Yeah, and thank you for the piece on the health, councillor Mordu. I read your piece in the paper. I thought you were about right with what you said. I mean, we, the town council and both myself, like yourself, have been involved in these. And I know you've been member of a health board authority. It does seem rather challenging, doesn't it, that we are now running down the clock on something which was first pre-ruined to the community in 2018 as being something that would go forward and probably signaled in 2017 that, when in public meetings. And we are now at a situation where a decision needs to be taken to bring this forward, to give security to the community. You will be aware, I expect councillor Mordu, what's happened with the hospitals and stuff in other parts of Buckinghamshire. Councillor Harvey attended the last Health and Scrutiny Committee to raise questions on these matters. And I believe that the last Health and Scrutiny Committee, it was premised by a member that they still haven't got an answer on these things. Now, the health issues are, are a major factor of how Buckingham goes forward. We know the situations of the doctors' surgeries. So I thank you for what you're doing on that. But I know that every member of this council has been, as individuals or collectively, been working that. The thing that I would want to ask you as well is, I know that on the localism and communities select committee, they're likely to have an item on the community boards on the agenda. Has, has that been discussed in the constitutional committee? Because you alluded to the, the matters of named councillors at meetings might be revisited. Was that discussed in a constitution? Because I know you've been discussing the constitution on many things, including the changes to the planning to improve the situation for town and parish councils, which resulted in coming back to the audit committee last time that that was going to go forward. So has the community board been to the constitutional committee? Or will that go to a future meeting, councillor Mordu?
The constitution committee is looking at the main aspects of the constitution. It doesn't include aspects to do with the health and wellbeing board. As you said, it has mainly to do with the planning. There's many other issues that came up as far as constitution. But I cannot, it would be wrong of me to go into what came up because it has to go before the audit committee. And it will go before council as far as the constitution goes. As far as the community boards go, I think that's a matter that isn't required to go through the constitutional process, although it is part of the constitution. There. As far as the health and wellbeing board is, as I said, is completely separate to the constitution or anything to do with the workings. And there will be changes to that probably as after the next election. Because, you know, the health and wellbeing board and the people who are represented on it is changing. You know, we have the BOBS system which is coming in. And the CCG will be no longer around. I think it's about another year or two, or another year. The, one other little bit of information is that the care home that's being built up at Lacehill will be operated by a company which also has care homes. The nearest one, I believe, is in Vista. Who is, it is a reputable company and they operate care homes up and down the country.
Just lastly, councillor Mordu, just to follow it. You said the constitutional committee wasn't looking at the community boards. But I would imagine, not being too naive about these things, that the community boards seek their powers from the constitution of the council because they have, they have terms of reference and they get them from the constitution of the council. Which, why I said, are they in alignment? Because it appears the actions of the community boards are not that much in line with the actions of the council through its own constitution. Because no council in its constitution would have such liberty as they've got. So I think if, if that's not going, I, I, I'd ask you to go back and seek clarity on that. Because the two things do not seem in alignment. Terms of reference, the constitution and the way the community boards conduct themselves is going to be communities and localism committee. So I should imagine there may be a large discussion about these matters.
It was discussed at considerable length in a working group, which was part of the standards board, which was looking at the boundary commissions. And there's a lot of councillors spend a lot of time on the community boards. And it was looked at in depth on that. And the, and a, and a report from that working group has been now sent to the boundaries commission for their comments. It's something that's going to be ongoing for a long time yet. So the current proposal has gone to the boundaries board.
Thank you.
It's, it's a, it's a little bit of muddy water where, as to what aspects the constitution is, which is clearly defined within the constitution. But something like the community board was set up by the council. But it has been discussed at length by the standards board. by the standards board working group to do with the boundaries commission.
Don't quite follow that, but thanks anyway councillor Mordu for your answer.
Don't, don't worry. I don't blame you in the least. It's, you've got 16 community boards. All councillors are on it. Some are on two or three community boards. And that's why the standards boards and boundary commissioner are looking at that aspect. You can't really expect one councillor to be on three community boards and spend all that time on it. So that's why that's being looked at from that point of view.
Okay, thank you. Have we got anything else from anyone else?
We've got Warren White's now here.
Warren down there, yeah. Warren, he's on mute. Hi Warren.
Good evening. Sorry I was late. I was double booked. So I was at Thornbury Parish Council first because they were discussing some flooding issues. So I wanted to make sure I was there to assist. So a couple of quick updates from me. Actually, I'll stick with flooding actually. So I had a very useful meeting with Anglin Water last week. It was my first real meeting out, outdoors. So I was quite, made a nice change. We had a good conversation about the the way the sewerage system works in Buckingham, which was quite enlightening about the way some of the town goes through Cornwall Meadows and how much goes then on to Lindo Village and out towards the, what they call the recycling centre. So that was good understanding of the basic system process. They're also going to be taking part in the council section 19 review, which, which will be commencing soon. I'm told that consultants will be or have been appointed in the, in the next, well, the last week or this week to get started. So that will be good news. Of course, it takes several months for the section 19 review to be undertaken, but hopefully that will come forward later this year with some recommendations for all stakeholders to take on board. I'm still chasing up the Environment Agency for a physical onsite visit. We've only met virtually so far. And I'm hoping that will happen during April. I'm keen to walk a couple of the key sites within Buckingham that were problematic. The Nelson Street, Tindig Road Junction, the Ford at Wells Street, and then obviously the Cornwall Meadows area itself. So that's all quite interesting discussions going forward. On other matters, you just touched on constitutional things when I came in. Just to say that I've had some really positive progress being done on the constitutional changes for planning related elements. I've had some good conversations with our planning chairs and our legal team. So I am hopeful that you will see some positive changes coming forward to full council in the next, well, I think the next month sometime. Which will address many of the issues that have been raised over the last 10 months or so. So that's promising. And then finally, I just caught a little bit about healthcare. I thought I'd just share that one of my roles is I sit on the Buckinghamshire Growth Board. And because of the numerous issues that I've become aware of up and down the county, particularly Buckingham, Winslow, Princess Risborough, Born End, Aylesbury and others. We actually had the NHS attend the growth board to discuss our concerns about their plans for future growth. And we had a very useful conversation outlining certainly my personal concerns, but also the council's concerns about what, how they're planning for the current capacity gaps that we're aware of. So Buckingham is a good example of that. And also the known growth through the local plan process. So that was a very useful conversation. I think it sets our ambition and intent very clearly for the various elements of the NHS to consider. So there will inevitably be several follow-up meetings in due course. But I think we made our position very clear that the council wants to help facilitate the growth of our healthcare capacity, but we need the NHS to step up to the plate. And that's the clear message from me as well. That's probably the key things I'd want to report. I suppose I'd just say that you'll have seen some of our road repairs have started now the weather has improved. Though today was particularly unfortunate where the A421 was late reopening due to late delivery of tarmac and then the machine being slow as well. So that was a little bit unfortunate, but I'm told that was a one-off. We're catching up on pottle repairs during the winter process and hopefully if we get those done by the rest of this month and into April, we can crack on with the new April onwards resurfacing programme.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Turchby has a hand up there, I think.
Firstly, can I thank you councillor White for meeting the Environment Agency in the community in your cabinet role. Would be interested to know whether you managed to extract any information out of them about the pollution incident. I suspect you didn't. But secondly, I would like to pay tribute to the way you worked with the amendment, with the motion to council on the constitution to amend the parish, to bring parish councils back into it. We did meet before the meeting. And I think it's, I'd like you look forward to it coming to council. And I'd like you look forward to the changes. It was something the council, after the motion was took to council and amended by your good self, will actually return some vigour back to the local parish and town councils. Of course, we haven't seen that unless you have, you may well have done. I haven't, I haven't seen what the wording will be. But I think that at least shows a signal of people listening. And, and I, I, I would thank you for your cooperation in helping that to take place. Because you did cooperate and you did help, and that needs to be said.
Thank you councillor Turchby. I should, I should, I should have prefaced my comments earlier that whilst I put forward a number of amendments to the constitution, it's not in my gift to change the constitution. So I'm reliant on the working group to do the right thing. So I'm sure they will. In terms of the pollution events, this was on my mind actually as soon as we had the flooding events, that there's been a bit of a communication gap from the Environment Agency in the pollution event. So I did chase this up in the new year. And we did get a newsletter finally in February from the EEA. But lo and behold, it had nothing, no, no information at all about the actual pollution event and what they are doing in terms of any, any culprits being charged or whatever. So I have chased them up again in the nicest possible way. So I do hope we get an update before long.
Oh, thank you for that. I, I, I thought that would be the case councillor White. But as I'm saying, I'm really pleased that something's going to happen to allow the parishes back into meetings. So we haven't got to do so many callings.
Thank you councillor Cole.
Thank you mayor. Councillor White, you mentioned the A421 roadworks. As you know, it's been fairly chaotic. The big problem has been that nobody in Buckingham was given any advance warning of any sort. Also, the ongoing roadworks at the Tesco Roundabout, which on Saturday meant people were trapped in the Tesco car park for up to 30 minutes by the four-way traffic lights. Again, no notice given to Buckingham Town Council. I checked with Louise Stubbs in the council office this morning. She said we can only pass on advisories and that we've received no notice from Transport for Bucks about the work at the Tesco Roundabout or the work between Warden and Bottle Dump Roundabouts. In fact, there'd been no advisories for the past three weeks for some reason, whereas normally it's a weekly, a weekly mailing. Could you, could you look into that and find out what's gone wrong? Thank you.
I'd recommend the town clerk perhaps contacts Transfer for Bucks because certainly councillors are getting the weekly list in the last two or three weeks. So if there was a pause or someone's dropped off the mailing list, then maybe the town clerk could just follow that up with, with Transfer for Bucks communication. So that's unfortunate that's happened. Obviously, my ward doesn't cover Tesco Roundabout, but one of our regular challenges as councillors is that if the utilities companies end up doing some emergency works, none of us get advised about that. So that's a real problem.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're all happy with that. We shall move on to item 10, the action list. Councillor Gately. You're muted Margaret.
Yeah, trying to find it. Thank you. Um, just one of the columns seems to have slipped. The, under the, the second item, the photograph, under the own, the update, it says crossing now removed following road closure. Which is clearly nothing to do with the photograph. And that does, I don't know quite what's happened, but it needs just sorting out.
Yeah. Okay, councillor Cole.
Thank you mayor. Towards the bottom of the first page, BTC representation, representation at community board. I'm obliged to councillor Mordu for bringing us up to speed on that. And as you know, we lost that debate about it could be addressed as councillor. But I have put a motion before the March 18th Community and Localism Select Committee, which I will be attending as representative of Buckingham Town Council. My motion says I would ask that town and parish councils and meetings be given a greater voice and vote on these local boards, which were set up to replace the local area forums on which they had both. It's undemocratic that these town and parish councils and meetings be denied a vote on matters which concern them directly. It is not enough that they hold only an advisory role, which only board, with only board members permitted to vote. Buckinghamshire councillors are not necessarily obliged to take into account. I cannot believe that this is the intent under the new constitution and I ask that this inequity, inequity be righted. And that meeting I'm attending is on Thursday morning.
Thank you. Councillor Turchby?
Firstly, I'm, I'm pleased that councillor Cole's attending that meeting to represent the position of the council on this. I think that's a good thing to say to the select committee in the, in the start of the meeting. I, I think he's right to pursue that. He's been nothing more than diligent on these matters. But my question is, obviously on nine stroke 12 stroke 18. My eyesight's not as great as it was, which is the, obviously, the 22nd 1st of May, we're going to be discussing a, a, a public meeting in regards to health. Now, what's been said both in the public in the paper, what's been said in the House or the Health and Scrutiny Committee, which may change its name. Never more have we needed a meeting to seek clarity and support our Swan practice to progress their project. Never more has it been so important. And with the changes to the health service as councillor Mordu alluded to, never more has it been important that we meet them. And with the question that councillor Harvey took to the previous house meeting, which was in the, was followed up with another question about it at the last house meeting. Never more has it been important that we understand what's going to happen about Buckingham Hospital and whatever. We are at a conjunction with all these things and change is now upon us. The government is now changing the, the health service again. So we do need a public meeting to seek clarity. And I think that this needs to be something that is arranged at the earliest opportunity. This was agreed to be done in 2018. We don't need to go into the history of why we didn't do it. But it just shows now that maybe we should have been in more discussions going forward. And we have raised the issue of the planning consent ourselves about the time for the it'd be timed out this calendar year. Where will we be if we don't have a health centre? And where will the Swan practice be? So I think we need that practice to support them in their arguments and seek clarity on the other thing. And I would like to think that at the earliest opportunity, it says the 21st of May, we will be having a meeting for the new council elected to actually meet the constituents and discuss all these issues because it's a perfect trilogy, isn't it? No one part of the health service works without the other part of it. And I think this is now coming to a head. And I hope that the town clerk will be able to facilitate that within the new council at the earliest possible moment. Because 12 months will pass very quickly.
Okay, thank you.
He hasn't, I was hoping the town clerk would respond.
Oh, sorry, I, I didn't realise that required a response. Sorry, Robin, I didn't realise that required a response.
I said, I hope the town clerk will at the earliest opportunity. I think there was a good clue there. But but then you went silent. So I, I, I was looking for some words from you.
Well, it is down in May, so absolutely with new councils in, it will be on the top of the list to get done.
Well, that gives me some reassurance, but it would have been better if we'd had it before perhaps, but never mind, we are where we are.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Anything else on the action list now? Okay. Right, so we shall move on to the Buckinghamshire Council consultation to receive and discuss the written report from the town plant officer. Have we got? By a biodiversity accounting supplementary planning document. Who was going to speak on that, Paul?
Well, I can, Sheena's not here, she obviously wrote the report. I can take questions on it.
Okay.
Depending on the questions.
Okay. Councillor Harvey?
Yeah, I just, to speak and support the recommendations. I mean, essentially, as I understand it, the recommendations are saying, we've thought of this already. It's in our neighbourhood development plan. Join us effectively. So I propose that we accept the recommendations without hesitation.
Agreed. Everybody agreed on that? Nobody else? Agreed, thank you. All right. I have my hand up. Sorry Ruth, it didn't go on, I think, but I also wanted to support the recommendations and was going to propose it, but I'll have to second it now. But totally agree with it. Thank you. Thank you.
I also have my hand up when you said we'll move on. I, I think it's following on from the Chair of Environment Committee. I think this is a good document. But if you read the Buckinghamshire Council's environmentally, it's very reliant on the amount of trees which can be planted and the targets for Buckinghamshire Council are 2050 and the targets that we're the, the, the climate change targets are 2050 and, and the professional or most prudent view was 2030. Now, we, they are planning to plant several hundred thousand trees in, in a time period to account for that. Now, I think we need to with the new lands coming forward and other things that decisions we take is to see where and how we can assist them in this because there's a lot of trees to be planted and we need to be involved in guiding them. I did seek clarity from the cabinet member the other day that they would be native trees and they would not be imported trees. The reason I say not imported trees is because all imported trees have brought every virus to our country, which has given us ash, dieback, Dutch elm disease and now a disease for oaks. So I think we have to have a communication with them to seek clarity that these trees they're going to plant in their biodiversity agenda aren't going to be imported. And also we need to seek a meeting at the earliest possible moment to see whether what we've got in our plan, which was a motion from councillor Ruth Nell in the original, which was the climate action emergency motion, which we, we actually started this ball rolling really because that went to the district council, the county council followed suit. And now Buckinghamshire Council's looking at the environment. So I think if councillor Nell hadn't actually put the first motion to this council, which there's one in Hagden as well, I believe, we wouldn't have got any purchase on this at all. So for small acorns, large oak trees grow. So we have been as a group of councillors leading on this, led by our Chair of Environment. So I, I think we do need to enter into serious discussions with them in the new council about how they're going to actually implement this stuff. Because words on a paper are great, but it's the implementation of their plans which is important and how they're going to get the carbon levels down. We're going to try and do ours, but we need to seek clarity of how they're going to do it. There may be some partnership there. There may be some cooperation. But I think it's, can't be said enough that I think if we hadn't raised these issues here, maybe nothing would have changed at all. Thank you, Adam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on that subject? No. Okay, we'll move on to item 12, the Diversity and Inclusion Working Group to receive a verbal members. Who is doing the, Robina?
Hi, yeah. So the Diversity and Inclusion Working Group has been doing quite well. Hi, yeah. So the Diversity and Inclusion Working Group has been doing quite well. We've discussed, discussed a number of issues. The main recommendation is that we would like to take the working group forward into the next council session. And we discussed a possible diversity champion on the town council itself. And we are also working towards putting out a letter to all the schools within the area, including nursery providers, to discuss diversity and inclusion, and also create a list of safeguarding leaves within the schools, which we feel will help not only pupils but also parents.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Stutsky?
Can I, I thank councillor Robina for what she, she said. Can I just ask that, that in that communication, key is, is safeguarding would be Buckinghamshire Council. And key is that they have some buy-in to this, because the policies which will, which will lead in all the schools and the communities will be from there. So we need, if, if, if we agree those things, we need to buy in. Buckinghamshire Council has to have a buy-in into this. They have to be inclusive in it, and they have to play an active part in it as the ally, educated by plus, they, in children's services, have a safeguarding and role, and plus, they are responsible for the mental health and wellbeing indirectly. And they also are in charge of community health, or mental health is part of community health. So I think we need to make sure that they come in. As a town council, we are not the principal authority. So we need to make sure that they are partner in these actions, because without that, we can't succeed.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Cole?
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, thank you, Robina. She chaired the last meeting which I was at, and I think we are going in the right direction. Everything's looking good. However, I have one grave area of concern. Tonight, we received the Environment Committee minutes, and in those minutes was an, an executive decision to plant a memorial tree. A visit to Buckingham. Jefferson was a lifelong slave owner. He had 600 slaves on his plantations through the Americas, and he was also responsible for moving Native Americans from their tribal territories in 1803, as he was the promoter of the Louisiana Purchase. I don't support rewriting history. I think we should leave things as they are, but let people know what exactly things represent. But I do not believe that creating a new memorial sits well with our current thinking, or with what we're discussing tonight. We have our Diversity and Inclusion Working Group. I realise that the decision's been taken. There's nothing we can do for six months now, but in six months' time, I shall very, very strongly propose that we overturn that decision to plant a tree in memory of a slave owner. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Harvey.
Hang on. Yeah, thank you, councillor Cole, for that information. I was not aware of that, as I'm sure not aware of a lot of things in the world. The decision can be rescinded if six councillors are prepared to sign a motion within the Environment Committee to rescind that, that, that decision. We can do it, and I would support you in that. We don't have to pursue this if that is the case. So I would, you've got to see this as number two from me.
Okay, thank you, councillor Mordu.
Jefferson didn't come on his own. Everything that councillor Cole has said is correct. He was a slave owner, but he's a slave owner because he was a plantation owner. And in the days before mechanization, they did have, the only way they could run a plantation was to have slaves. And I think it's an abhorrent thing to do. And, but he did visit Buckingham with Adams. And Adams was a lawyer, and he was absolutely against slavery. But I think to plant a tree in memory of Jefferson, when in America, it would not be considered right to do that, in the view of what's going on at the moment. I think we, the matter should be revisited. One of the, I know, I've seen the letter which was sent. And I think the town clerk has taken it up with the two or three people who are mainly concerned with it, to see what their thoughts are.
Okay, thank you, councillor Newell.
Yeah, I just wanted to explain the background, really, that the request came from Robert Cunningham, who spoke at the Buckingham Society AGM. And the Buckingham Society supported the planting of a tree. And Mr. and Mrs. Cunningham was purchasing the tree. So they just asked for the permission for it to be planted on church green. So that's, that's how it came to us, and that's the background to it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Stutsky.
Firstly, I thank councillor Cole for a history lesson. And the one thing with America, you've only got to worry about 250 years' history, haven't you? So unlike this country, where we've probably got to stay more history, I didn't know Jefferson, history about Jefferson. I think what we need to do when we make this decision, if we change our decision, is to have the historical reference with it. But pay notes, the, the intention to plant the tree was in good faith. The information has come out now. Maybe that's our fault for not knowing American history. But I think we shouldn't put any slight on the individuals in any way, shape or form for donating the tree. But I think we must discuss it with all the facts before us, not, and, and come to a decision based upon every bit of the historical facts around it, based about what the tree was donated for, and, and, and the, the decision was taken. So that when we make that decision, we make it with full knowledge of everything. I don't think we should, we should rush to reverse something without doing proper due diligence on it, or on having all the paperwork. We could offend people on both sides with it. And also, it may be appropriate that, that if, if the decision was to still have the tree, that an appropriate plaque was put up, which recognized the historical facts which has been said. But I'm really, to try and reverse a decision from another committee, which has been ratified on council at this stage, isn't tidy. So that's why I think that if anything comes through, it's got to have the complete paperwork with it, not, not just media reaction to it. I think we have to be shown to be responsible.
Thank you, councillor Ralph.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, I was going to say, a little mitigation of the situation. It's not correct. It's in the memory of Thomas Jefferson. It's, it's in memory of a visit he, Mr. Adams made to, to Stowe, to, to see the, the Duke, I believe. And he stayed at Summerhouse Hill. And I think that was the, the link there. And secondly, I do understand that just outside Monticello, the nearest county is actually called Buckingham County in the United States. So there has been a historical sort of relevance to the, the two people. That is not to, in any way, suggest that that diminishes what was clearly not a very good thing to have in terms of slavery. I'm not arguing that point at all. I was just trying to indicate that it really was the visit that was being as part of the Americans coming to see the Duke of Buckingham many moons ago. And so that, that's the context in which Carolyn and Robert have been looking at it.
After I saw, saw it, what Mark and Mark had said about it today, I went and did some research on it, and it said, he and the rest of the party decided to visit England to look at the gardens of one was all sorts, Worcester and Oxford. Stowe Gardens was the garden here that he visited. So obviously, he stayed in Buckingham to visit Stowe Gardens. And it also said that he, while he liked the gardens, he disliked the British monarchy. He disliked our English constitution and disagreed with it completely. So I think plant, if we planted a tree upon the church grass, it's probably the wrong place, as he didn't like any of our establishment or institutions or monarchy. Link to article. Anybody else got anything to say on that? Councillor Mordu?
I think it was Adams or Jeff's, oh, it would have been Adams, probably, was ambassador to France, the new states of America. And he, and of course, the French financed him part of the American War of Independence against the British. But it was councillor Ralph was saying about Buckingham County. In fact, we did have a commemoration plaque in the council chamber when John Pemberton visited Buckingham County many years ago. So we do have a tacit link with that, that area.
Good God, Madam Mayor, can I suggest that this goes on the next Environment Committee agenda with all the information available? Because we've had a lot of history lesson tonight. Some of it is great. And I didn't know what, you said, Madam Mayor, and I didn't know what councillor Cole said about Jefferson. And I think we just need all the facts there. And maybe can we ask for a note from the Diversity Group, with, because it's an item we're discussing on their view. So we take that into consideration when we make a future decision on it, but not predicate that decision tonight. I think that's wrong. We should do it with all the facts, as I said.
Okay, thank you. Did you have your hand up, councillor Smith?
I do. Thank you. I, I, I've just, while you've been talking, I've been half listening and half glued to a Wikipedia page on another device that I've got up. He was a bit of a nasty devil, he was, when it comes down to it. And, you know, I don't know how much weight you put behind the authority of Wikipedia, but I, in the two, two or three minutes I was actually looking through it, there was certainly a lot more bad than good about him, from, from the point of view of diversity and all the rest of it. So I, I would be happy to, happy to support that we overturn this decision at some stage or the other.
Yeah, same here, Madam Mayor. I'd be happy to put my signature to bring the item back to the Environment Committee. And I have messaged Mark to say that I'll happily sign for that.
Okay, thank you.
Obviously, I was trying to bring it back. I just think that let's, let's make that decision. Councillor Smith now has given us more history. So I think that, then that shows that we're making evidence-based decisions, and, and that's the right thing to do, surely, isn't it?
Absolutely.
Councillor Cole?
Yeah, ma'am, as concerned, someone said the tree has already been bought. Can we please ensure it's not planted until this is resolved?
Good point. Okay.
The town clerk has his hand up.
Oh, sorry, Paul.
Thank you, ma'am. And just two things. Firstly, if six councillors could email me to confirm they'd like that decision reconsidered, that'd help us just meet standing orders, although I take the mood of the meeting, so we will put it on the agenda. Also, to return to the first part of this discussion, ju- just to give councillors some comfort, that when the Diversity Group met after Christmas, they had a really lengthy and detailed input from Buckinghamshire Council officers, who talked through all the resources that Buckinghamshire Council make available to schools in terms of racism and bullying and those kinds of things. So a part of the intention of the letter, which councillor Ahmed mentioned, was to encourage local schools to take up the resources which we understand are available from Buckinghamshire Council. So we've, we have taken some good advice, I think, from the relevant officers, and will continue to do so and support them in their work.
Yeah, they should have all that in their safeguarding policy, shouldn't they?
They do.
Absolutely. Councillor Ahmed?
Yeah, I just want to clarify that in regards to forming that list of who's, who's the leader for safeguarding, we just want a list of who the people in the schools and nurseries are, as opposed to some are not so easy to find if you go to their websites. It's not about installing new people, it's just about finding out who they are.
Who the lead is, yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah. Anyone else? Also, councillor Stutsky again?
Well, can I thank the town clerk and councillor Robina for clarifying those conversations that were taking place, which was what I asked, but I'm not part of the Diversity Group. So as it, as it was, decisions of the council was, we'd appoint so many people. But can we pay tribute to the work that's been undertaken? And, and this, these questions are continuing questions, and not always answered in one go. So I think that an ever-present mind on these things is a good thing. And, and as nothing else has come out of it, I know more about Jefferson now than I ever did before. So it wouldn't, if we hadn't been on the agenda, I'd have known none of that. And, and knowledge is a powerful thing, isn't it? It makes better decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. So would it be appropriate, Paul, if the office sort of contacted the schools and asked for the list of the lead members in the safeguarding in, in, in each schools?
Yeah, once you've got the letter drafted, the group will send it out, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
It is on all schools' websites, as far as I'm aware.
Yeah, true. Thank you, Ruth. Okay, we shall move on to item 13, the motion from, sorry, I'm losing my voice, councillor Christine Sten Clark.
Oh, thank you, ma'am. I would, with your permission, like to say a few words just before I put the motion, filling in the background. But I will have to read it, because I'm unable to actually easily sort of talk without having, you know, having prepared, okay? It was, of course, in July last year that I first proposed that this council establish a working group to examine issues brought to public attention by recent racist events, including the murder of George Floyd in Minneapolis. Of course, it was all too easy to sit back and say, what's that got to do with us? This isn't the United States. But we needed, we found out we needed to acknowledge that racism exists throughout the world, even in Buckingham, and to listen to those most affected by it, and to challenge it in our own town whenever it occurs. It's never easy to discuss racism, but the working group bravely took it, took this on, and my motion seeks to recognize their work. So I'd like to propose that this council, as it nears the end of its term, expresses its thanks to all councillors and residents, who by taking part in the Diversity and Inclusion Working Group, have moved Buckingham one step on the way to becoming an anti-racist town.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure we all agree with that, and hope that's what we all can do. Councillor Smith?
I'm, I'm happy to second, more than happy just to, to second that motion, if it requires one. I would, however, suggest of a small amendment, that we include supporters, as well as those councillors, taking part in the inclusion. You will recall that before the group really got going, there were other councillors around this table, around this screen, who, who were fairly proactive, supporting the Black Lives Matter event in August, and in pushing to get the thing up and getting some clarified stuff, taking part in the, in those various short sessions that councillor Tri managed to arrange, Buckshee for us and all the rest of it. So I think supporters ought to be included somewhere in there as well. I would suggest between by taking part in and the diversity, we include the words "and supporters".
Sorry, Christine, you happy with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chris.
Councillor Stutsky?
Just to say that I thank councillor Smith for raising that. I, I was fortunate enough to attend for a brief period with councillor Ruth Nurl and councillor Smith, the, the thing, not demonstration, well, an orderly gathering of people talking about diversity in the town centre. I know that it was actually very moving. It was actually very It was actually very informative. And, and what was most enlightening about it was being able to hear people's expression of their experiences. I think that it was a healthy exchange and it, I learnt things that I didn't know. And I, and you got to recognise things that you didn't realise. So I, I think councillor Smith is absolutely right. I stood there with councillor Smith and councillor Ruth Nill at the, the event. And, and it was, it was quite a, how do I say, an epiphany moment in Buckingham because the first time we'd openly expressed ourselves in a cooperative, community way in recognising these issues in the middle of the town centre peacefully, adultly and responsibly. So that was a, despite what was said about it before it. And it was, it was, it was a wonderful event. And I was only there for about an hour and a half. And what I learnt in that hour and a half was tremendous. And I think other councillors were there for longer. So I'm pleased with that. And I think we have moved the story on. But this isn't, this isn't a, a, an end to anything, it's a beginning. And that, that's how I see these things. You know, you can't mark this page as, as work done because we're going to have to continue to revisit it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sorry, councillor Ralph?
Muted.
You're on mute.
Yes, the phone rang, so I shut it up. And of course, you forget, I do beg your pardon. As the terms of reference for the working group mean that it comes to an end round about now, because it was a time-limited proposal. Could we, is it correct to be able to say that we make a recommendation that the new council, after the May elections, takes an early opportunity to refresh and continue this working group to carry on looking at all aspects of what we've been discussing?
Okay, thank you. Sorry, councillor Gatney, did you have your hand up there? No. Councillor Christine Stren Clark?
Yeah, I was going to say, yes. I, I didn't want to sort of impose on, on a future council. But to give them that suggestion, yes, yes, I think I'm totally in favour of that.
Okay, thank you. Paul, do we, can we do that tonight? Or can we, do we have to put that as a separate?
If, if members want to propose and agree that tonight, we could agree it tonight. Obviously, at the first meeting after the, the election, we will, the council will go through all the terms of reference and agree them again. So I'll certainly add the diversity group on to that list of terms of reference. And I'll amend the proposed terms of reference to take off the time limit on them for council to consider then. But it would probably help the new council if members could indicate their view on that beforehand.
Okay, do we need to take that first, or the motion first?
I propose through you, Madam Mayor, that we take the words of councillor Anthony Ralph and councillor Smith. And we bolt them to councillor Christine Strain's motion and agree in its authority as a way forward. And that commits the new council to both do both aspects of it.
Okay, are you happy with that, Christine? Or do you want to do it?
I'm perfectly delighted.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So can we take a vote on, on the motion? Everybody who agrees with that?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. That is unanimous.
Thank you. All done?
Thank you.
Good, thank you, Christine. Thank you, councillor Ahmed. Okay, so we should move on to item fourteen, which are the twenty mile per hour speed limits.
Thank you, Mayor. So I put this on in the hope there'd be a more detailed update. As you know, we, the council agreed to investigate twenty mile limits sometime last year. We put a request in to the community board to consider that proposal. Because the highways proposal has to be costed by TFB and we're still waiting for that costing to come through. I'm assured it will come through sometime in the next few weeks, but we don't yet have the cost. So that, in reality, that will end up being for members to consider in May, I presume, once we've got the detailed costing back.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Stutchley?
I'm minded to the fact that it was councillor Anthony Ralph who brought a motion to the council to facilitate twenty mile an hour being an issue. And it was with, which was, I think, was led from the actions within the Lays or residents' community. And, and the motion was to express this to areas which are appropriate in the town. In saying that, I am disappointed that Transport for Bucks haven't progressed this. And the community board hasn't seen it as a priority to be progressed. Because we did this at the start of the new authority's interim year. And, and it was quite a important position of this council that we did something about twenty mile an hour speed limits. I hope that the new elected Buckinghamshire council doesn't move this into the long grass. Because, because there was discussion at the present cabinet member that he would be minded to listen to any proposals coming forward from parishes. Of course, the new cabinet member in the new council might not be so minded to listen to the proposals of what we don't and return back to the stark position that Buckinghamshire council held for a great number of years where they don't support twenty mile an hour speed limits. So can I ask that we, this is an, this is an action of the council which has been agreed to be done. But if those discussions progress, that we move at the earliest opportunity through the officers to move this forward. We should not be waiting for the new authority and the new council to be elected. This is something which goes beyond those niceties. Councillor Anthony Ralph who brought the motion to the council, I thought was hopeful that we'd have a little bit more step pace with them. I mean, it'd be interesting what Anthony says, but I'm pretty, I'm not impressed that it's, it's moved to the back of the pub. Many things have been approved within forty hours notice in the community board. I get emails, can I approve this funding within forty-eight hours? For various things which are seen as good things. But this is a really good thing and a real good thing for the community of Buckingham. And it hasn't received the attention it should have done. I hope that that isn't going to be the case and I hope that it will be moved forward swiftly.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? No. Okay. So we shall move on to item fifteen, council chamber update from the town clerk.
Thank you very much. So I, I think most members are aware, having looked through the window, the council chamber is nearly completed. We have a meeting with the builder this week to hopefully solve some final snagging issues. I'm confident that the chamber will be ready for our new councillors. Whether our new councillor is allowed to use it straight away as a different matter, obviously. Once the builders are out, hopefully in a couple of weeks, we'll be able to test the sound that we've got there and see if it's fit for hybrid meetings or not. And if it's not, then we'll be able to quickly investigate anything else we might need to put in place. But until we're able to get in there and properly test the screens we already have, we won't know if we need to do anything else yet.
Okay, thank you. And item sixteen, the update again from town clerk on the COVID nineteen.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a standard item, as you know. There's not actually much to report. The good thing about the current situation is we have dates from the government which haven't changed. So we're hoping to reopen according to the government's dates. Once, once all shops are able to open, we'll reopen the TIC and probably the shop mobility at least on Saturdays as well. And we hope to carry on the events programme from June, July. We're certainly planning for the Buckingham Community Day to go ahead on the 10th of July. And that will hopefully be the start of the full events programme for the rest of the year.
Okay, thank you. They're hoping, I know, because I'm doing the vaccinations, so they haven't had a Pfizer delivery since the beginning. So they're hoping to get one second week in April and start doing the second vaccinations of the Pfizer on people. Until then, it's carry on with the Oxford one. But it's all going well down there, so it's good. Okay, item seventeen, the unitary council to receive a verbal report again from the town clerk?
Thank you, yeah. So the update on this is, you'll remember, we've been trying to have discussions about taking on additional devolved services and assets from the unitary council. Ahead of a meeting in September with officers, those, the officers then changed, then somebody was off sick. So last week I had the follow-on meeting from that, which was with an officer I hadn't met before to kind of start the discussions again. So we had a really lengthy, positive, detailed discussion last week. And hopefully I'll hear back from that in a few weeks to find out what Buckinghamshire council's position is looking like.
Okay, thank you, councillor Stutchley.
The parish charter and the wish, which is a document in work and the constitution was hoping to transfer stuff over. Now, I expect there's been problems with this interim year of the council moving these forward. But the devolved service agreement we got with them was extended. We've added a slight extension to it. The whole thing about how we work with them was all premised on the fact that it was a revenue neutral thing. And it wishes and the stuff this, that the town clerk put forward was reduced some. So the first areas that we were looking at were not necessarily the areas that we were wanting to look at. So the decisions we took tonight on areas of land to move forward with, with the amendment from councillor Collins, shows the direction that I think the council wishes to proceed in, which is to be a more outward-going and running stuff. So I'm, I'm a little concerned that these matters have drifted because we need to sort this out at the earliest opportunity. Because we have to plan budgets in the next year. And bouncing these things on us in November of the following year before pre-set will be big enough. We really need some clarity in case we have to grow budgets and budget to do stuff or reduce budgets to do other things. So can I ask the town clerk that in his conversations, have they got a timeframe about these matters? Have they got a, are they, at what stage will we get into the second conversation? Because you brought a report back about the first day that we looked at. It's the second stuff, these are the very key things that predict how Buckingham works and services and land and assets. So I think that would be where I want to know the information. Thank you.
Yeah, so if I may, the, from the conversation I had last week, we certainly wouldn't be changing anything or taking anything on until April twenty twenty-two. So there would be, if we can have a negotiation next few months, that would be in time for pre-set discussions for next year. It may be that some of the items that were excluded because they were too tricky might be brought forward into that discussion as well. But I'm waiting to hear back on if that will be possible, but that might be up for discussion.
Well, thank you, town clerk. Please bring, bring something in written form as soon as possible to a future Environment Committee.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else got a hand up there? No? Okay, we should move on to item eighteen, which is to receive some correspondence from the Police and Crime Commissioner. So everyone's seen that.
Propose, we note it?
Yeah.
Agreed.
Councillor Cole?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, as the councillor who proposed the motion to not shut these counters, I looked at this report from the commissioner with some doubt. I mean, he may not like what's come back, but it says fifty-one percent stated front counters were their preferred method of contacting the police. That's a majority. Brexit was fifty-two percent to forty-eight. We left Europe. He doesn't like fifty-one percent. I'm sorry, he wants, he's the one who wanted to do the survey of people. And he said, we'll continue to keep our communities updated of our decision, whatever we decide. That hasn't happened yet. So I think we need to go back to him and say fifty-one percent, Mr Commissioner, means a majority want the front counters kept open. Thank you.
Absolutely. Councillor Stutchley?
I agree. The, the reason I was suggesting noting it, because there's absolutely no point going back to this gentleman because he's not going to be in office. He's, he's standing down there, there's an election in May. So I, I would think we go back to the new elected member and seek to raise the questions that councillor Cole did. Because talking to him, he's not going to change his mind. And if he does, he's not going to be in post, post May the eighth. So I think the questions that councillor Cole raised are good questions and they should go to the new Police and Crime Commissioner. And, and hopefully he, he's got bigger ears and listens.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Harvey?
I think we should go back with speed, even though I know the election's coming up in May for a new Police and Crime Commissioner. We don't know who will be elected, obviously. But we can certainly lodge our concerns based on what councillor Cole has just said about the fifty-one percent. And that is something we hope that will be taken forward to the new administration. And hopefully that no preemptive decision will be taken at this point in the electoral cycle, which would be wholly inappropriate. I would also, I think it's worth, you know, for the record, reading out what he wrote in the letter, which I thought was significant, was that he said that he has some concerns about the closing of police stations. Well, that's good to hear. However, with the considerable cuts to the police budget we have sustained over the last ten years, some difficult decisions had to be made. We have lost some seven hundred officers and rather more staff. So that means we're talking of fifteen hundred officers and staff that have lost their jobs that we no longer have in Thames Valley that we had ten years ago. I think that is an extraordinary admission by our current Police and Crime Commissioner. And I would hope that whoever is elected to take over their post will address that shortage forthwith.
Councillor Stutchley?
In all this, it is well worth noting the request from the police for witnesses to an incident on the Mayes-Morton Road. And it's worth noting that at any one time, I understand till corrected, there's only a limited amount of police officers available at a weekend to service the large area. And this is all under his tenure of Chief Crime Commissioner. So these are all things that he's agreed, he's been in charge of. And at the time that he's done it, these things have happened. So that's why a new person, he or she, will be a breath of fresh air. And maybe we can see those police numbers grow back. They're not going to come overnight. But it is worth noting that in all that time, he's been in the unenviable position, unlike local authorities, of having an unrate cap budget, which means all the decisions he took about finance over police, he was in a position to not cut the police. He was in a position to set whatever level of council tax was necessary to secure the police. That is, it is, is where it was. But these decisions were within his tenure. And, and as he, he steps down to retirement, we must hope for the new person to be more aware of counters, more aware of the rural policing issues and more aware of the fact that councillor Harvey pointed out, there's seven hundred something less police officers than before. So let's be optimistic for change. Whatever comes after the election will be a positive, clearly judging by the record.
Thank you, councillor Stutchley. Councillor Harvey? You're on mute.
Yeah, sorry. Just to correct the record, the Police and Crime Commissioner, the, the pre-set rate was capped. For example, the PCC of Bedfordshire had to go to a referendum to try and get a right, a rate above two percent increase and indeed failed in that referendum that he called. So no PCCs have had their rates capped by the government over the last ten, eleven years. So sadly, you know, this starts and ends at Westminster. And whilst the PCC had probably done his best to mitigate that, in the end, that is national policy that has led us to a significant reduction in the police. And the consequences of that to people's feelings of safety on our streets as well. Because it isn't just police that have gone, it's the, it's, it's the PCSOs as well, whom we know provided the very useful press. whom we know provided a very useful presence on our streets and they have disappeared more or less completely. And in many ways, what was built up over many years of neighbourhood policing was essentially torn to shreds in the last ten years. And that's a tragic, tragic failure by this government in the last ten years to look after people's safety and welfare.
Yeah.
I just, I just note, councillor Harvey, could you send me the information to do with the capping? Because a whole conversation at the fire authority the other day was based around the premise that the police were not capped. So please send it, Meg. I'd like to take that up with them because that conversation was, was inaccurate.
I'll try and find it, Robbie.
Thank you.
The only positive thing is that there is some present police recruitment going on now to increase the numbers in. I don't know, don't know how many Thames Valley will get, but it's to increase the numbers in quite a few areas. So hopefully that will come through. Paul?
Yeah, can, can I just clarify whether I'm being asked to respond to this correspondence or not? I know members have made, expressed various views on the subject, but I'm not clear where we are.
Yeah, Matt.
Yeah, councillor Cole?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to make what I said a proposal then, that we go back and point out fifty one percent is a majority and therefore they should keeping the council.
Agree.
Agree. And agree on that, yes. I think that's what we do agree, yes.
Yeah, we could leave, leave one country for it, yet we can't do whatever, yeah. Fair point.
Yes, please. Okay, we should move on to item nineteen, the town council awards memorabilia. To receive suggestions on that. Paul, did we have?
Yes, so we'll bring a, a report to interim council with recommendations, but this is an opportunity for members to make any additional suggestions that you already might have made.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Councillor Stinchley.
Could, could I suggest that we look at the whole business of memorabilia per se at some point, because we seem to order trays and, and then we seem to, I've got one sat in the cupboard up there somewhere, still in the box from my time as mayor. I think what, what, what may be appropriate for, for ten years ago, maybe things move on and something else is more appropriate than, than a, a, a small silver tray for outgoing mares or other dignitaries. We just look at it in a way and see what's appropriate against the backdrop of what's around now. Maybe there's something environmentally friendly we can, we can purchase in keeping with what we're doing, but can we just look at the whole thing again at some point?
What we did say we were going to do.
Yeah, but I mean, just saying we're going to do it, let's actually do it.
No, that's why we're asking for suggestions from people. Okay, suggestions, please.
Suggestions, yes.
Mike wanted to speak. Sorry, councillor Smith?
Thank you. We, we had a working group, we had a meeting about this. We did discuss some options. They are on the table. I think what Paul is asking for is if there's any additional ideas to come forward.
Yeah. Thank you.
I'm relieved.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, because I think I did email Paul after that meeting because we were talking about like a gavel for mares and I suggested a swan would be nice, particularly for female mares.
Yep. Okay, okay. So hopefully loads more suggestions will come in. Okay, we shall move on to item twenty, the town council elections and perda from Paul.
Yeah, not much. It's mostly just for information, just
Yeah.
Just to note the dates. So on Monday, the tenth of May, we've now put in an informal meeting to discuss the new deputy mayor and, and mayor informally, and after that to have an induction session for new councillors.
Okay, thank you. And we'll move on to item twenty one, the climate emergency action plan. Receive an update on that. Who was doing that one?
Ruth Hasahan.
Yeah, I asked for it to go on the agenda because I think it, because it's a climate emergency, it's important that it's discussed more than once a year. And I've asked committees if they can put it on every other agenda. So ideally, I'd like it to be on the full council agenda once a quarter rather than once a year. I thank Nina for updating it. The council did appoint climate champions, so myself, Margaret, Anthony and Rabina. So as well as the emergency action plan being divided amongst committees and full council, we've also shared it out amongst the four of us. So Margaret's covering energy, Anthony, transport, myself, food and land and economy, housing and waste and Rabina, community engagement. And we reached going through the previous version of it, seeing how we could move things on, but this version has been updated. So you know, we need to update our looking at it because some of the things that we live asked about will have been updated. I know a few things have dropped off it, including grant applicants to consider the impact of the environment to their project and that there was a working group on grants that decided not to consider that. And I think that's a great shame because it is a way of moving things forward in the town. But on the positive side, which would have been, you know, we didn't have it in time for when we put forward awards, but I did have an update from the Royal Atherton that said that they were awarded a grant from Salix and the public sector decarbonisation scheme. And it's funded new windows, solar panels, new loft insulation, as well as replacing lights to LED lights and battery storage for any surplus electricity they generate. They've planted seventy native tree saplings and they're installing two electric vehicle charging points and a new ten rack bicycle rack. And they've been told that should reduce their carbon emissions by twenty five tonnes a year. So it's excellent that that's going on in the town as well. Yeah, so I just want the council to support that we sort of review the climate emergency action plan more often than once a year and preferably quarterly. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Stinchley?
I'm happy to second that, but I also would like to pay credit to councillor Ruth Noel because it was the climate action emergency motion to the town council that produced the climate emergency action plan. And, and every committee reviews this and she's right that we should review it quarterly. I also think we have to recognise that we are in a community of people doing things. I've been privileged enough to attend both the climate emergency strike action by the students at the Latin School. And I also have been unfortunate to attend stuff that they've done up there about planting trees and stuff. I think councillor Maudie was with me on one occasion. So I think that they're doing things. What we need to do is assist other schools to do similar. So I think what we need to do is to use what is good practice and make sure other schools can paraphrase because one, it's not about who's best, it's about what's best. So I think this is where it needs to go to other schools and other, other partners in the town. So I think when we review it, perhaps we should send it out to, to partner organisations at the time when we review it. Because it may be things that come in from those people which we can enlighten and enrich the action plan. So it shouldn't be a static document. It should be a live document which keeps changing as and when, whatever. So in seconding that, I ask that we keep reviewing it and we bring other stakeholders into it, be it schools, because having listened to young people talk at both at the local democracy week events and listen at young people talk at the local grammar school, they're far ahead of us on these things. And they, and where they want to be is, we're far behind. So we've got a lot of running to catch up. And after all, they're going to inherit what we leave them. So I think we need to be minded to that. But let's bring them into the, into the story.
Thank you. Councillor Harvey?
Yeah, one of the things that we observed in the last few months really has been the increasing trend of insurance companies to default to having trees cut down to, to when faced with claims for subsidence. And where I think many of us are concerned about the number of trees that have been cut down, not just for that reason, but for other reasons as well. And I'm wondering really, you know, given the importance of trees in terms of tackling climate change, because they're the ones that actually gobble up the carbon dioxide, that we ought to have something in there. I mean, if we're reviewing it, let's review it with a purpose. And I think we ought to be putting in there something around looking into what can change with regards to our neighbourhood development plan or other laws that can maybe be used to stop the, the needless destruction of, of trees that we're seeing more and more on the areas around, around, around Buckingham. Can we do that? Can we add that?
Agreed.
Councillor Ross?
Great.
Thank you, Adam Mayor. But just to say that I look after the, the transport bit on the emergency plan. And while going, going through the status of various elements, I was pleased to see that I was able to actually do a little bit of leapfrogging even from the latest report because it is a moving document. And I think that's quite pleasing. And I think it will please councillor White when I mentioned that and he was talking very recently about the funding coming forward for the extension to the cycle, cycle routes, Mount Pleasant, Gorket and from the university into the town centre. And that seems to be moving forward at, at the politician's word is at pace. And also that we now can say, I believe that there are six EV points being put into Cornwall's Meadow and sit going to be put into Western Avenue. So that's more definitive than the report even says. And there's nothing wrong with the report. It just shows that it is live and I'm quite pleased to report that.
Thank you.
Okay. Everybody in favour of what we have said there?
Yeah, agreed.
Yeah. Okay, very good. Thank you. Item twenty two, the town council business plan. To receive and approve a four year business plan for the town council in appendix D. Paul is going to speak to us on that.
If I can just remind councillors, there shouldn't be anything here that's new or surprising. So all the descriptions of committees and the actions have been agreed by those committees. So it's just bringing everything together in one place. So new councillors can see something the council has approved, which they can then look at and either agree with or disagree and start again if they so choose.
Yeah, thank you. Councillor Cole?
Yes, thank you, excellent document. If I could just ask for one correction on page five. It talks of Buckingham University. Of course it's not. It's the University of Buckingham.
I did that.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Harvey?
Yeah, looking forward to, to plans and objectives for this forthcoming year. One of the things that's become very apparent in the last few days even is how many more women find themselves fearful of walking our streets here in Buckingham. Not just Clapham Common, but here in Buckingham than do men. And it's certainly one of the factors that's been of concern has been some of the poor street lighting in various places, including perhaps in some of the parks that we look after. Now, I'm, I'm for dark areas in the town in the sense that I don't want more light pollution. But I think if there are paths that are used by people for, for running or for walking and are used very regularly, we ought to be looking into perhaps those areas as being ones that will to be better lit than they currently are. So I would like to raise a motion from the floor of this meeting with regards to the business plan that we ask the town clerk and the green spaces manager, our state's manager, Lee, to have a look into what are some of the options of where there might be more street lighting and illumination put in to, to our parks, the bits that we look after as a town council and bring that back to the new council sometime early in May. I think this is an area of great concern and certainly the mood that picking up of, of social media, it, a lot of women are very concerned about this. And I think it's worth looking into on, on the behalf of the residents of the town.
I'd just second that motion, please.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Stinchley?
Yeah, I'm glad councillor, it's a Daniel second it. Pardon, beg your pardon. Just to say that lighting on, we discussed the transport issues in the previous thing. And the way people safely move around the town, Gorket Parish Council relit the Gorket Road for children to get to Buckingham, which is a good thing, but the path needs making safe enough for them to actually walk down. But the path is, so now they're walking on the road or cycling on the road because it's safer than the path. So not only just lighting needs to be considered where people walk to make sure they use safe routes. The other area is that signalling that we want to do lights, evidently we don't fortunately fund the lights in Buckingham. That is a Buckinghamshire Council responsibility and long may it remain so. Some villages have to fund their streetlights. We don't want to take that on. Because mainly because lots of the streetlights in Buckingham are old. Many of them are coming to the end of their life and you've only got to walk around how long posts stay sawn off or broken off before they're actually replaced. So it's a poignant thing. But I think it's something that we have to do some serious evidence gathering around because there's some dark points at Mays-Morton Road which have never been addressed. And some of our town centre lights have been out for months and never, ever been replaced. And it's not only just for young ladies and, and women to walk around, children need the safety of the lights to go to school. So it's a good thing to do. So I hope we can move on with this and get something positive in the new council.
Thank you. Anybody else on that? We all agreed with the motion from Ruth?
Yeah.
Yeah, John. John.
Okay, right. So to item twenty three, we have reports from representatives on outside bodies and twenty three point one, we have councillor Hirons.
Yes, I'm afraid mine is probably going to be reasonably lengthy. Nothing else. I've been on the Bucks Newsel Drainage Board for eight, ten years now and I don't think I've ever reported on it. So.
We don't want ten years worth, Paul.
And just sit down and listen to where we are with drainage. The Drainage Board is an odd thing. It, it was set up by the nineteen twenty seven Act of the, what is it? It's down in Kent, the navigation there, the Medway Act. And nothing's ever happened to it since, which means that it's absolutely cast in stone. And if you want to change anything, you've got to have a, you know, the, the, the government's got to agree. In fact, it's going to go through parliament. So you don't, you try and find ways around it. So there was the Buckinghamshire and the Buckingham and Ouzell Drainage Board. But then about, about the year two thousand, it merged with the Bedford and Ival Board. And that measured, actually merged with the Ettington and Ellington Board, which is over by, oh, it's, it's right over in South Northamptonshire. It was where there was a big RAF base. But these are all run now as one drainage board. They never had, we never really had any premises, but in the time I've been there, we did actually spend a lot of money and build some new premises, which is one half offices, which the total office staff is not very big. I mean, we're talking about, I don't know, fifteen people. And then it also, the other side is where the equipment is. And, you know, we've got some big, um, you know, because for doing all this work, you need some pretty big equipment, not so much heavy, but, you know, excavators that can reach a long way over to get to the other side of waterway. The object of the exercise is not so much to stop, well, it's to make keep the water moving. That's why they were set up in the splatter parts of the country, not the hilly parts, because the flat parts will, will tend to stay there. And nobody's got a great impetus in actually keeping the waterways clear. And the idea was, was for these, in these flat areas to keep the waterways moving steadily. So it goes down to the main river, the Ouz in aircase, which we're not responsible for at all. In fact, we responsible for the round the back of Padbury Mill, uh, we stopped being responsible for the Twins, the uh, river that comes over from, well, really the best way of looking at it is the service area on the M forty, which is as far as we go that way. So anyway, that's all been going on. But then about two years ago, we started get, we've got some really big personnel problems. First of all, John Oldfield, who some of you may know, certainly Catherine, who was always, who's the chief engineer, um, had a very serious illness, he had leukaemia. And he's kept working, but can only work a couple of days a week, which in a very lightly uh, man thing like this isn't really very good, especially covering a big area, which means you have to get out and everything. Then, in about six months after that, Frances Bowler, who was the secretary, i.e. the boss, she was entitled for early retirement, so she left. So we were a bit up, you know, where we're without a paddle. And we recruited and recruited a lady called Beverly Agath, who unfortunately, we were advised by some expert from uh, some civil service thing. And the thing was, they seem to work under a very different logic to everybody else. They work on a logic of where they think the person's good. The fact they don't know anything about it is nothing whatever, doesn't matter. Now, this seems to work very well if you're running a hospital or something, apparently. But it isn't very good when you're running a fairly small organisation like this, because you really need to have a sort of fairly working knowledge of engineering, both drainage, but also um, the equipment, you know, you need to know a backhoe loader from a digger, you know, that sort of thing. Uh, and she didn't. And anyway, after a year, she's decided to go as well. So we've got the one chief manager, oh, can only manage two days a week, and the other one just leaving. And this is a pretty serious thing. And the trouble is, in a small organisation, it's very difficult to have a proper management um, succession policies. You know, you just don't have people like that. Beneath the uh, chief engineer is a foreman. And the way we're running at the moment, he has to cover everything between Oxfordshire and Cambridge. Uh, and, you know, you've got three people working there and two people working there and all the rest of it. It's, it's just not, not a proper way of doing it. So it has been suggested that we join, which we actually, we've merged these three together to make the Bedford Group, even though legally we are still three separate ones. And then we add, we join actually one which is based on King's Lynn, which is a bigger organisation, but not that much bigger. And we put them all together and run them. So they're going to probably run, we're going to try it for a year anyway, because we've just found that what we don't do, just doesn't seem to work in the long term. Now, the thing is, I've got pretty, have to get quite involved in this more than I ever wanted to, because of course, you can't, you know, when you um, get these sort of issues, it comes down to the boards. And then you see, I'm chairman of the Bucks and Ouzil Board because there were such political ram, 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 ramblings but in between, in particular Milton Keynes, but sometimes in Bedford, between the two parties, which were very nearly equal. And they weren't coming, they weren't, they just, even though there was nothing whatever to do with Drainage Boards, they weren't capable of agreeing on anything. Uh, just for the sake, because it was, it was recommended by them, you know, I think it was the Labour Party and the Liberal Democrats, but I'm not absolutely sure. Um, and so anyway, that's why I was asked to be chairman, which I've done for five, six years now. And it seems to have gone all right, but we come under the bigger one, you see, which is the, we spend, have about a third, the third of the expenditure. The half is done by the Bedford Ivell and the rest is up. So I've, we've, we're just trying out this new way of working, which is going to start at the end of this month. So that's quite a long thing. Um, we don't actually, um, we don't, we are not as, Buckingham Town Council is not a statutory member of the Drainage Board. The people who are, are either the people who have the, have um, riparian owners, you know, people who own some riverbank, which we do have got. Uh, we're along by dear old Otis Brook. But otherwise, it's doesn't, the people who really put all the money in are the two big uh, Bedford, Bedford Borough. Or that's mid beds now, one of the Bedfordshire ones. And uh, Elsbury Bay had put a smaller amount in. And then Oxfordshire put in, they're covering the bit of water that they put in at the end. And so they're the ones who take the lead. And I'm very happy to take their lead because I didn't really want this whole business of having to reorganise. So at the moment, we're doing that and I'm just sitting there waiting for something to happen. Um, it hasn't really affected their efficiency for what we really do. Um, what has affected us and what is causing a lot of trouble is the government decided some years ago to set up the local flood authority, which in practice, I can shake any council brass. But it doesn't seem to actually really do anything. It hasn't really grasped the whole thing that it should do. Uh, because it's one of these things, the government set it up because it sounded good. They didn't put any money into it. And what we're having there is they're setting up uh, we did sort of, we're actually part of it, even though we're a small part, because they sort of talk about people, sort of, how many million pounds can you put into the budget for this? Because one of the big problems is, is that virtually all the water infrastructure is wearing out in fifty years. We're going to have to replace sort of every single bridge, pipe, all the rest of it between uh, Oxfordshire and the sea, you know, which is going to cover a bit on the pricey side. And as usual with the, we haven't got the money to do it. And so that's one of the uh, challenges. They're, they're offering about half the money or three quarters of it, but the rest has got to be begged for the local authorities. And that's one reason why I wouldn't want to be able to break the, the local flood authority, because one of the things they expect is you to be able to say, well, I can put two million quid in for this, you know, something like that. And I don't think the town council is quite into that level of um, expenditure. But in fact, there are things happening because they're also talking of some sort of a joint committee, which will actually bring together the various players, about Anglian Water, the uh, Environment Agency, Drainage Boards. And I mean, in this area, going between here and the Welsh, there are, oh, I don't know, twenty, twenty Drainage Boards. And so all of those together to try and work out what's going to happen about water in this area. Because with the amount of development that is planned here, I'm almost certain that there's going to be both ways really. There's going to be a shortage of water for drinking and there's a shortage of dealing with sewage. And all that's got to be dealt with somehow. The government doesn't really know how to do it. The organisation it has is not really fit for purpose, because you have lots of bits dealing with bits of it. And there is no one really pulling it together. So that's what I've been doing. Now, whether this council wants to continue, I mean, I'm actually on it at the moment in, on a personal basis, if you like. Uh, whether the council wants to continue to try and put someone on this, I don't know. A lot will depend if you've got someone who wants to do it. Because it does involve normally quite a lot of travelling over to Stewart Beach, just south of Bedford, which is where the offices are. Um, and of course, it's unpaid. So that's the story about the Drainage Board. And as I'm lean, as I'm finishing, uh, it doesn't actually affect this. Um, because as I say, I'm on it on a personal basis rather than uh, rather than, I was sort of co-opted rather than anything else. But I think they might be quite glad if someone wants to do it. But it would help, you know, you do really need to have some sort of engineering. Idea. Then the second one of mine is North Bucks Parish's Planning Consortium, which I got dropped into as chair, as Warren knows. Um, once again, some years ago, uh, which I didn't really want to, but I didn't, I don't mind sharing things, you know. I didn't want to have to do the rest. Uh, but this in this law, shame really, because we had just managed to get some credibility with AVDC. And they were inviting us and so covering the stuff with us. And then, of course, they go and go, well, get rid of AVDC. And so the whole thing has really got to be redone. The whole, the objective of North Bucks Parish's Planning Consortium was originally to try and keep uh, Milton Keynes where it is, to stop it coming over the ridge, the ridge over into the Warden Chase, which it hasn't managed to do. But then, of course, there's been so much other that needs doing, because a lot of these small, well, let's say small villages because don't really have any different um, don't feel they have any say at all in the planning decisions. And they're very glad of having a, a joint one they can, you can put together and then go and see. And it has been working. But of course, in the last year, with the uh, the change in the government, the change in the organisation, it really, and I will be coming up, because one of their, one of their rules is that you actually have to be a councillor uh, in their, in their area to uh, take, to join. So I'm another, we, well, there is a member here who has showed an interest, but of course, it all has to be done by voting of that group. Then finally, you've got HS2 and East West Water, East West Rail, sorry. That's the drain, what the Drainage Board does to you, you see. Um, which I've spoke, I have spoken about before. Last meeting, we did actually have the minister for HS2 come. But I can't say, there's not much you could really, anyone could do about it, except because once you're going to de-build big infrastructure projects like this, you're going to have to have lots of transport to get stuff to it and from it and all the rest of it. And that's what's happening. And it's messing up because there are hardly any roads in North Buckinghamshire, which is suitable for intensive use by eight-wheelers, which is what they're using all the time for tippers. You know, going round the, the big, the fixed bog is scared and tear up the road surface. So it's, it's really a mess. And I think, I think they'd actually be doing probably as best they can. Uh, I don't think anyone will agree with that, but that's about all I've got to say. Right. Thank you very much. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for that, Paul. I think now we need to plant that forest between Milton Keynes and us.
When's the book come out, Paul?
Oh, no, you're saying about being modern, it all has to be done now online, doesn't it? It has to be a video or something.
Could I, can I propose that we actually thank councillor Hirons for the work that he's undertaken on the Drainage Board on our behalf? The work that he's taken on North Buck Parish for having the fortitude to go to all these meetings and drive to um, um, Kingdom Come and Back again on our behalf. Uh, 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 very little um, um, financial assistance, but he has diligently served us. And I think that is something worth noting, and I think we should thank him for that. I also
We have.
noted that I attended the meeting where the minister attended myself and um, and there was many questions that came up to the minister, to be fair. Um, and he answered most of them quite honestly and openly. Um, and as Paul quite rightly said, many of it is difficult for him to address because he's come into the project halfway through. But I do think importantly, can we record in a minute? Because it sounds like councillor Hirons isn't going to be a councillor. And it's important that we thank him for his time, his service and what he's done on our behalf.
Agree.
His time as planning everything he's done, he's been nothing more than a boy. And if nothing else, he'd be definite in his view. And I've respected that, even though Paul and I have not been on the same lines. So record that in a minute. Thank you.
Absolutely.
It's been a pleasure.
Good, please. Okay, we've got twenty-three point two, we've got councillor Newell. Yeah. Arms Houses.
All of that.
Buckingham Arms Houses and Welfare Charity. I'm pleased to be one of the town council reps on that. And we meet quarterly. There's two parts to the charity. The Arms Houses in Buckingham that are near the old post office and the ones in Church Street. And the other part of it is the welfare charity. So um, I'm on the committee that deals with the welfare grants. And our grants have been much in need over the past year. We've given funding to the Emergency Food Bank and a number of individual requests where people are desperate for funds. And I'm also on the Residents and Beneficiaries Committee, and that deals with um, dealing with the people that are in the Arms Houses. And when vacancies come up, sort of going through the process of finding someone suitable and in most need to occupy them. Um, Buckingham Community Wildlife Project, the notes of those meetings go to the Environment Committee, but I'll also send them to full council. Um, we're made up of the different wildlife groups in Buckingham. So we've got the Canal Society, um, Buckingham Society, the Wayward Walk Conservation Group, that of course works closely with the town council. And they look after the scenic walk as well. Um, and the town councillor on there as well. And Mays Morton Avenue was one of the groups, but we don't get reports from them. But we know that their members are active in sort of litter picking and things like that. And we also have representatives from Buckinghamshire Council that are able to update us on wildlife in the area. So that's a lovely group to be part of, and we meet four times a year. The Twinning Association, I think, again, I'm one of three reps from the town council. And twinning has been very active during lockdown. We've been having meetings every other week um, on Zoom. But we've also got a number of social groups that also meet on Zooms. There's a social group that when we're out of lockdown, they will probably meet in a pub or something like that. But we've also got a German-speaking group and a French-speaking group. And anyone, um, you know, can go along to those and you can listen to people speaking the languages or join in. you can listen to people speak in the languages or join in. There's a really good Facebook group as well for the Twinning Association. And we keep in touch with our two twin towns. And I'm hoping very much that the formal twinning with our German town can complete with something over here. Because you'll remember that, I think Mark it was, went over there for the German celebration of it. And then we were about to arrange the return visit here and then Covid struck. But hopefully that can be completed soon. I mean, that, that is dear to my heart because I signed the friendship agreement with them when I was mayor. And with Brexit and everything, I thought it was really important that we formalised it as a twinning. And also, when I first said to it about the person that was leaving, a hundred years since the end of the First World War. And I'd been to France and visited, you know, my relatives' grave. And, you know, there's just so many graves over there from all nationalities. And then the last thing is tree wardens. We haven't been able to do much due to lockdown, but we have had a Zoom meeting. We've got lots of active tree wardens. And we're all thinking of possible places where we can plant trees. And we're also saying which areas of Buckingham we could be responsible for. So we can get on with our work as tree wardens, either on our own or in a group. And, you know, we'll be progressing that more once we're out of lockdown. Thank you.
Well done, Ruth.
Thank you, Ruth.
Well done.
Councillor Stutbury?
Can I propose that we thank councillor Neil for service? Can I also propose that we write to all those organisations? This has been six years, not four years. And we also, can I record our thanks to all the councillors who have served the extra time with no remission on the town council? But I think we should record in the minutes that they've been good public servants to our town. And they've done two more years in some cases than they plan to. And I think we should pay gratitude to those councillors for doing that and supporting the community and being part of a, a good project, which is town council, which is a community council. I'd like that to go in there because we have a charge to thank these people again. And I think this is the right meeting to thank them. And, and just briefly, Corker Child Trust did hand some money out. It was publicised in the paper the other day. And councillor White and myself from Corker Child Trust. And, and it's nice to actually hand some money out, but there's not a lot of money there. But giving money out is always pleasurable. We won't go into the organisations or the detail of that. I don't think it's appropriate, but it still functions as an organisation. And hopefully one day it will be able to do what it's always wanted to do, which is spend its entire money and, and wind up. Of course, our late councillor Hedley Cadde, there's a nice piece in the paper from the mayor about him the other day, which I read. It was a councillor on the council. He was chairman of Corker Child Trust for a number of years before I took over the chair after his sad loss. And, and he no longer was a councillor. But a lot of money was handed out in the period of time there, and a lot of money has been handed out since. It's been a successful organisation, whoever's been on it. But I, I just hope we can record our fans. I personally enjoyed their company, although all the councillors who were standing, who obviously are standing down. But it's been great that we've always been in agreement, even if we were not in agreement, that what we wanted to do was serve Buckingham. And I think that's worth noting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Item twenty four is just a list of, the very short list of mayor engagements, as we've not been able to do that much. Hopefully, it will improve soon. And item twenty five, chairs announcements. I think Robin said most of what I was going to say. I just wanted to say thank you to everybody on our full council as we will be meeting as a full council again. For all the support for myself and supporting all of our residents in Buckingham. And I wish everybody well who's going to stand again. And everybody well who chooses to go on to something that's just new.
Thank you, ma'am.
It was lovely to see that article on Hedley because I, 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 I think he was great. Many interesting conversations within.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, if members didn't know, Buckinghamshire Council also remembered him at their last meeting. Bill Chatter, who's a longtime friend of mine, and I was fortunate enough to speak on him briefly as well. And, and it was, it was an honour. He was our friend and he was the mayor of Buckingham and we remember him.
So was councillor Aishen, he was a good.
Exactly. That's true. We love our, our dear friend.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Well said, councillor Donnie. Good friend to us all.
Definitely.
So the date of our next meeting is interim council on Monday, the nineteenth of April. And that is it for tonight. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, ma'am.
Good luck.
We've got to move to private session now.
Yeah.
Yeah. We have. Okay.